The Board of Commissioners would like to present the National Safety If y'all can hear me. The National Safety Digging Month Proclamation to Joe Orwood of AT&amp;T Paulding County UCC President and Andreale Bowles, the Paulding County DOT Utility Coordinator for Paulding UCC Secretary. She drove around during the tornado and she is one safe driver, I can tell you that. So, I'm going to get Keith to read the proclamation for that if you don't mind, please, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And, whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And, whereas, the Paulding County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And, whereas, damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Paulding County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. And therefore, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Safe Digging Month and encourage all contractors and homeowners throughout Paulding County to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident.
All right, thank you Chairman Estes, Board. Thank you so much for this proclamation today. On behalf of the Paulding County UCC, we want to thank you again for this proclamation because it is, 2024 numbers for utilities, especially telecoms, were not very good. We had around 19,000-plus cuts, damages, and that's really not a good number to speak on. Again, we're trending down every year because we partner with Georgia 811 and we get across this county. Basically, it doesn't matter if you're doing a fence post or a mailbox, get your 811 digging, it's free for the public. All the utilities pay into that. I work for AT&amp;T, so we pay into that as well as other utilities and we make that free to the public. Please do that, it's real simple. And you can go online and do it as well as calling the number. So, again, we just want to thank you very much for helping us keep Paulding safe and we can keep communications going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You going to say anything?
Yeah. Great. Yeah. That's it? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. You guys take everything you do, you're very welcome. Thank you, guys.
Good. Thank y'all, I regret y'all giving my hand. Okay. Invited guests, we have none. Going to bid awards. First, discuss action to award of the 2025 Asphalt Bituminous Surface Treatment Project Number One to the lowest builder, Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated, Inc., in the amount of $703,113.75. Road scheduled in the contracts are located in Posts Two and Posts Four. Funding for the project will be allocated from the general funds.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. The 2025 Asphalt Bituminous Surface Treatment Project One was advertised and two bids were received and opened on March 21st of 2025. The contract included 8.695 miles of triple bituminous surface treatment, including prime coat and a fog seal on 11 roads. DOT reviewed the two bids and recommended award to the lowest responsive bidder, which is Northwest Georgia Paving, Inc., in the amount of $703,113.75. The low bid was 17.5% lower than the county estimate and lower than the unit price of a similar contract awarded in 2024. DOT and Finance recommend award of the 2025 Asphalt Bituminous Surface Treatment Project to the lowest bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving, Inc., in the amount of $703,113.75. Roads are located in Posts Two and Four and funding is allocated out of the general funds.
Good, thank you.
I have a question. Yes, I just wanted to ask, really for the sake of the public, not a challenge, but this is 8.69 miles, did you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's $703,000, so what does that work out about per mile? Because I'm always getting asked, why aren't we paving this or that? And this is not even paving, this is just another kind of surface.
It's a triple surface. I'd have to calculate it.
Okay.
I can't run that number off the top of my head.
That's okay, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have thrown that math problem at you this early in the morning. But, what is it to pave a road? What's the cost to pave a road? Because I'm often getting asked, you know, why we're not repaving every road every year, pretty much.
Right. It's a good bit more expensive. One of the reasons, too, that we don't, like, some of these roads aren't on the paving list is one, they don't have the required right-of-way that we typically need for the road structure to get the full width lanes in, along with shoulders and ditches. As a way to put a nice hard surface down, we looked at different alternatives and triple surface is one of those, which gives you that aggregate in tar and gravel and a seal coat on there that kind of makes that road.
Holds it together.
Pulls it together and holds it together. It's better than the millings that we put down on a lot of the dirt roads because they come apart. This seals it a little bit better. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I will, any other comments? I will tell you, I've been getting a lot of correspondence from all over the county saying they see you on the roads constantly, so good job on getting our roads paved. It's a big process, but y'all are doing great.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Next would be discuss action to approve the purchase of a 2025 Tahoe from Hardy Chevrolet utilizing the state contract pricing in the amount of $60,195 for the sheriff's office, funded through SPOSS.
Good morning. In the 2026 budget, the sheriff has requested a Tahoe and conveniently enough, the window has closed, we will not open back up until next year, more than likely. And so, the sheriff has requested that they purchase a vehicle that Hardy has on the lot that is a state contract-priced vehicle. So, they're requesting that they purchase a 2026 vehicle using SPOSS dollars, or a 2025 vehicle, to supply the need that has been requested in the 2026 budget. And this Tahoe is in the amount of $60,195. And again, that's off the state contract pricing that Hardy actually holds.
Any comment? Public participation, reports from committees, I'm sorry, in departments, we have none. Public participation of attendance, the
damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas, the Paulding County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the national 811 notification system in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas, damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Paulding County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. And therefore, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Safe Digging Month, and encourage all contractors and homeowners throughout Paulding County to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Estes. Board, thank you so much for this proclamation today. On behalf of the Paulding County UCC, we, we want to thank you again for this proclamation because it is, 2024 numbers for utilities, especially telecoms, were not very good. We had around 19,000-plus cuts, damages, and, and that's a, that's really not a good number to speak on. Again, we're trending down every year because we partner with Georgia 811, and we get across this county. Basically, it doesn't matter if you're doing a fence post or a mailbox, get your 811 digging. It's free for the public. All the utilities pay into that. I work for AT&amp;T, so we, we pay into that as well as other utilities, and we make that free to the public. Please do that. It's real simple, and you can go online and do it as well, as well as calling the numbers. So again, we just want to thank you very much for helping us keep Paulding safe, and we can keep communications going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You going to say anything?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I think everything you do, considering you're very welcome. Thank you, guys. Good job. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you all. Congrats, y'all give them a hand. Got it. Invited guests, we have none. Going to bid awards. First, discuss action to award of the 2025 Asphalt Bituminous Surface Treatment Project Number One to the lowest bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated, in the amount of $703,113.75. Road scheduled in the contracts are located in Posts Two and Posts Four. Funding for the project will be allocated from the general funds.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. The 2025 Asphalt Bituminous Surface Treatment Project One was advertised, and two bids were received, and opened on March 21st of 2025. The contract included 8.695 miles of triple surface, triple bituminous surface treatment, including prime coat and a fog seal on 11 roads. DOT reviewed the two bids and recommended award to the lowest responsive bidder, which is Northwest Georgia Paving, Inc., in the amount of $703,113.75. The low bid was 17.5% lower than the county estimate and lower than the unit price of a similar contract awarded in 2024. DOT and Finance recommend award of the 2025 Asphalt Bituminous Surface Treatment Project to the lowest bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving, Inc., in the amount of $703,113.75. Roads are located in Posts Two and Four, and funding is allocated out of the general funds.
Good. Thank you.
I have a question.
You got a question?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, really for the sake of the public, not, not a challenge, but this is 8.69 miles, did you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's $703,000. So what does that work out about per mile? Because I'm always getting asked, why aren't we paving this or that? And this is not even paving. This is just another kind of surface.
Triple surface. I'd have to calculate it.
Oh, okay.
I can't run that number off the top of my head.
That's okay. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have thrown that math problem at you this early in the morning. But what is it to pave a road? What's the cost to pave a road? Because I'm, I'm often getting asked, you know, why we're not repaving every road every year, pretty much.
Right. It's, it's a good bit more expensive. One of the reasons, too, that we don't, like, some of these roads aren't on the paving list is one, they don't have the required right of way that we typically need for the road structure to get the full width lanes in, along with shoulders and ditches. As a way to put a nice hard surface down, we looked at different alternatives, and triple surface is one of those, which gives you that aggregate in tar and gravel and a seal coat on there that, that kind of makes that road...
Holds it together.
Pulls it together and holds it together. It's better than the millings that we put down on a lot of the dirt roads because they come apart. This seals it a little bit better. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will tell you, I've been getting a lot of correspondence from all over the county saying they see you on the roads constantly, so good job on getting our roads paved. It's, it's a big process, but y'all are doing great.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next would be discuss action to approve the purchase of a 2025 Tahoe from Hardy Chevrolet utilizing the state contract pricing in the amount of $60,195 for the sheriff's office, funded through SPOS.
Good morning. In the 2026 budget, the sheriff has requested a Tahoe, and conveniently enough, the, the window has closed. We don't, will not open back up until next year, more than likely. And so the sheriff has requested that they purchase a vehicle that Hardy has on the lot that is a state contract priced vehicle. So they're requesting that they purchase a 2026 vehicle using SPOS dollars, or a 2025 vehicle, to supply the need that has been requested in the 2026 budget. And this Tahoe is in the amount of $60,195. And again, that's off the state contract pricing that Hardy actually holds.
Public participation, reports from committees, I'm sorry, and departments, we have none. Public participation of attendance, they, we're looking at the consent, consent agenda. Consider the following items. There's actually three of them. The first one is authorize a sale of the surplus equipment to Harrelson County Fire Department in the amount of $10,000. You can see that it's a, it's a fire engine number six. Number two is declare the following items listed for surplus and approve their disposal from the sale, the auction, trade, or donation. Another fire engine from the fire department. And number three is to appoint Richard Wynn to the construction board with a term starting in April the 8th of 2025 through December the 31st of 2025. And would any of the commissioners like to move that to new, any of these to new business? Y'all okay with them? No old business? New business? Authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental agreement with the RKNK LLP for the amount of $42,160 for the roadway improvement projects on Metromont Road between Rosedale Drive and Angum Road, projects located in Posts Three, with the funding allotted from SPOS.
Yes, sir. Good morning again. On September 28th, 2021, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners awarded a contract to RKNK LLP in the amount of $129,268.56 for preliminary engineering design services for roadway improvements along Metromont Road and then between Rosedale Drive and Angum Road, located in Posts Three. A notice to, a notice to proceed was issued by Paulding County DOT on October 21st of 2021. The developments adjacent to Metromont Road between Rosedale Drive and Angum are, are mainly non-residential. A section of Metromont Road between Hiram Business Park and Angum Road is not constructed to the county's non-residential roadway standards. In addition, the intersection of Rosedale's Drive and Metromont Road and Angum Road and Metromont Road have various geometric deficiencies that hinder safety and operations. To improve operations and safety on this section of Metromont Road, three projects were identified. The first is a widening of Metromont Road from Angum Road to Hiram Industrial Park to the county non-residential roadway standard. The second is an intersection improvement project at Metromont Road and Rosedale Drive. And the third is the intersection improvement project of Metromont Road at Angum, Angum Road. Due to the staffing shortages that we held at DOT, the county slowed the design work with RKNK and was tasked, that was tasked to complete, and the county has now available manpower and has asked RKNK to resume the project. Reviewing the plans and in the contract, it has been determined that an additional funding request is needed. That includes additional hours to incorporate items that require additional scope and then tasks that were not initially identified within the project agreement. Those items include extending the pavement limits of Metromont Road and incorporating this into the work and plan set, including hours for right-of-way revisions due to negotiations, revisions to the plan designed for Old Roper Road, and including a traffic control plan. The cost for the supplemental agreement request is $41,260. The new overall engineering services agreement with RKKK LLP is $170,528.56. The project schedule has been updated, and a tentative let date of fall of 2025 has been established, understanding there are still multiple right-of-way parcels that are still needed to construct the project. Project funding for the supplemental will be provided by SPOS.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, sir.
That's really the conclusion of the regular business. Public participation of knowledge and hours. We've had Todd Palnel wants to speak, so if he's here, sign in. And I think on rezoning.
Don't start my time yet.
Mr. Palnel, if I could, just before you start...
I'd like to clarify.
Yeah.
Please do. Thank you so much.
Mr. Palnel had submitted a request to speak on non-agenda items. It came in late Friday. Ms. Meredith did not initially see that, but we've since added it to the agenda when we, when we realized this morning that you had sent it on a timely basis. And your topic today is going to be annexation and rezoning, I believe.
That's correct. I appreciate you clarifying that. I didn't want somebody to think we just walked in and got put on the agenda because that's not the way it goes. All right. Good morning to all of you. On February 27th, 2025, which was 40 days ago, you all received from the city of Dallas an annexation for 318.42 acres of land along Coal Lake Road, which is where I live. The annexation is to annex it into the city of Dallas for another, for more, 670 more new homes. So I come to you this morning for several things. If I've got it correct, y'all have, the board of commissioners have 45 days to object to that, the objection of that. Y'all can do something within 45 days. It's got to be in writing. I think today's 40, Sunday's 45, so it would need to be done by Thursday afternoon or Friday. I'm asking for you to object to it. Also, on the agenda today, you have executive session, real estate. Jason can clarify, but I believe y'all can talk about this in the executive session, because it's real estate. It's the transfer of property somewhat to the city of Dallas, and I believe you could probably talk about it. I also think that I'd like to hear something from you guys afterwards. I'm willing to stay. I'm willing to come back. I'll take a phone call. I'd like to talk to two of you at a time in person. That's what I'm asking for, is you to object to this annexation of 318 more acres into the city of Dallas. Also, if you remember correctly, several months back, it's been a year or so, I came and talked to you about other property annexed into the city of Dallas. Went to the city of Dallas council meeting. After the council meeting, there were several things said by some of the council people. It was after the meeting, but they said things like, well, those people can't even vote for us. We don't represent them. There's nothing that they can do. We, we have nothing to do with it. They, they don't live in the city of Dallas. All of those, although may have, that night seemed a little harsh to some of the elderly people that were there, all of those are true. So I ask you this morning, Mr. Dunn, Ms. Caker, Mr. Estes, Ms. Galloway, Mr. Snyder, and I came to the board before, two of you are new. Who represents us on Coal Lake Road and the, and the neighbors that I have in those, the community around there? Who represents us? If y'all don't represent us by saying no to this, and saying you have an objection and at least talking about it, who represents us? Because the city of Dallas doesn't represent us, so we're just kind of lost out there. We didn't get noticed. Thankfully, I have a couple people that did call me, let me know, but it wasn't any kind of official notice. My neighbors didn't get a notice or anything. So I did open records, and that's what I found out. So I'm asking you to object to it. I don't care what ACCG says. ACCG does not represent the people of Paulding County. All right? And we can say no. I'm also wanted to let you know that I've got a small five-acre pond, lake on my property. State of Georgia inspects those dams. Last fall, they came out to inspect my dam. I have a category-two dam, and I talked to the guy, I said, "What happens if they build homes back here?" He said, "Well, they wouldn't build it right there in any kind of floodplain." I said, "What happens if they build a lot of homes out there?" He said, "Well, you'd have to change the dam to a category-one." He did a simulation on his computer of what would happen if my dam failed, and I've got a 37-foot-deep lake. And it, and it is, the effect is 1.4 miles. That property is behind me. So who, who would pay for the upgrade of the dam? We're talking about a lot of money. But who would pay for that? Would it be the county? Would it be the city? Would it be the developer? I think there's some issues with the application. I'll leave it at that, if you know what I'm saying, Mr. Phillips. I think there's some issues with the application when it comes to the county and to the city. And I think it needs to be checked. So if you could object and put a hold, that would be wonderful. I'm asking y'all to do that. That's the way you could represent me and my family and the people on Coal Lake Road.
Mr. Palnel, your time's up.
Can I have just another minute? Please?
That's up to the board if there's a motion to allow additional time.
I make a motion to allow Todd Palnel... How much time?
Three minutes. Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Second. Can you take a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so much. So you've got this week, you've got till Friday to object. I don't even want to say the next thing, but I really don't care why you object. Maybe you object because you need more time. Maybe you object because you need to check into a couple things. Maybe you object because you need to have a conversation. You can have a conversation today. I'm pretty sure you can. This is the only place that I have a, a time to be able to come and talk to y'all. It's the only place that anybody has a time to come talk to every one of you. This is it. And that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for you to file an objection, Mr. Estes, and give us some time. We don't really want that there. We just got through with 300 other houses that they just approved. When you count that and you count what's already approved on that road, we're looking at somewhere around 1,500 houses. Enough's enough, and I need your help. City of Dallas does not represent us, and they're not going to. But y'all do. And it's not just Ms. Caker, Mr. Dunn. It's all of you. Because when it takes three votes to do something, you represent everyone in the county one way or another. So I'm asking for that. I asked for that about the dam. Check it out, because I'd like to know. You can call me. I'll come back up here. I'll wait. And this is nothing negative, but the last time, nobody got back with me. And that was frustrating. So I would like to have somebody get back with us. On behalf of my family and my neighbors and the surrounding folks, I would, I would ask that you get back with us, and let's see what we can do. I would appreciate it. I don't think I have anything else. If you have any questions for me, you know how to get ahold of me. And again, I appreciate it. Mr. Phillips, thank you. Rebecca? No problem. Okay? Thank you so much. I hope y'all have a great day, and I look forward to talking to you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Todd, and we will get back with you. I'll do it myself. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss real estate. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we will not, we'll be coming back. We will actually adjourn from there, if it'll be okay with y'all, so we'll see y'all later.
Sure you take a vote.
And we take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Pass. Y'all have a great day.